Yes, Representative Moss and Representative of the Michigan Municipal League are here to speak about the ballot. Well, I can say that both the press and the news have endorsed it. I believe it's vital for the long-term funding of our public work operation. For us, it's about a sustainable long-term amount. And within your three of the proposals, we would actually be able to restore some staffing in our public works group. And I think that's a, I'd love to see it happen.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you, Council President, Honorable Counsel, Mr. Mayor. I've been getting probably just as many questions as some of you have been getting about Proposal One. It's the road ballot proposal that we will all be voting on, on May the 5th, 2015. I compare this very similarly to the August 2014 personal property tax proposal that we all had questions on. It's the best of a bad situation. There's a lot of realities in Lansing that are going to make this the closest we will get to an adequate road funding formula in a long time and for a long time to come. I wanted to provide information to the city council. As I'm sure community stakeholders, you'll be asked for your personal opinion on it. Administration needs to know how to best prepare for what will come down to Southfield in terms of state funding. So I've invited Michigan Municipal League to prepare a PowerPoint presentation that they've taken from community to community to really explain how this impacts our communities back home. I think the biggest part of this equation is what is the end result for municipal revenue sharing? Because this is probably the biggest stake of the pot that is in flux should this ballot proposal pass, should it not pass. So I will be happy to answer after this presentation any of the questions of maybe the political reality in Lansing and the appetite for how this is going to pass. But I'll turn it over to John Lamachia from MML to talk about in specific the details of the proposals, the hard policy numbers.
Thank you, Representative. Before I get started, I would like to just make sure you have some documents in front of you, quite frankly. If you don't mind passing these around. It's one, a copy of my presentation, and then two, an earned income tax credit. I have a slide that's a part of this, as well as a letter from former House Speaker Bolger. So I'm going to kind of stand off to the side here and reference the PowerPoint. As I go through this, and I think Representative Moss kind of talked about it very eloquently in terms of this is kind of our one and only opportunity that we have right now. We really believe that after we... So I'm going to expand on that a little bit. And I'm actually going to touch on some of the political realities that he discussed and some of the things that we see from an organizational perspective potentially coming down the pipeline should this fail. So just... Is it up there?
No, I think it is.
Or if it's still, you don't have to...
Can you help me out?
Yeah.
I'll...
Thank you.
I've never given a presentation before, so I've never had to flicker.
That's all right. I've given all kinds of presentations on this, all kinds of different things, so it's never really... But you know, kind of quite simply, we're trying to lay out what Prop One is and what it does. And we really believe it provides a long-term fix. You know, it's going to require that all of the transportation taxes that you pay, so all of your gas tax registration fees, actually have to go to transportation. And I'll explain what exactly that means here in a minute. And lawmakers aren't going to be able to ship those dollars somewhere else in the long run. I know that's a big question a lot of our communities ask. Am I really going to get that money that they keep telling you that I'm going to get? And I'm here to tell you, yes, you will. And I'll tell you why. Obviously, when do we vote may fit. And I think that's important because as an organization, we're advocating for a yes vote. So I'd like to make sure we put that in there. And then what's the impact to our communities? And really, quite frankly, you think there's a tremendous amount of impact when we look at it, both on the road side and the revenue sharing side. And it's real money. It's not just with some hocus pocus dollars that are out there. And we really believe this is real revenue. So a little bit of history, and I start with 2013, but I want to back up just a little bit further than that and take you back to 1997, which was the last time that they raised gas taxes in the state. They raised it by four cents, and they only raised it on gasoline. They did not raise it on diesel. So we have a 19 cents per gallon gas tax right now, gas 15 cents on diesel, and no inflationary mechanism, which is a big kind of thing to remember there because had we installed an inflationary mechanism at that point, we wouldn't be dealing with the same severity of problems that we are now. So in 2013, everybody got excited. You know, the governor spoke. He said, "We're going to go on. We're going to fix the transportation system." And he talked about doing it in two ways, quite frankly, and that was increasing gas taxes and increasing registration fees. And the gas tax was kind of met with a lukewarm response. Registration fees was dead on the run. Media smart. They labeled it as the birthday tax, and people ran with it. And it was over really before it got rolling. But it did introduce some bills, had some conversations, but really nothing serious until we got to 2014 when Speaker Bolger kind of initiated his first plan, as I'll refer to it, which was about $450 to $500 billion. It reshuffled some existing dollars that were out there. The only new revenue, you heard me talk about the discrepancy between gasoline and diesel, we refer to it as diesel parity, would have made diesel gas taxes the same as gasoline gas taxes. That's about $50 million in new revenue in this plan. That was the only new revenue in that plan. So it was really just a reshuffling of current dollars that exist out there. We opposed it, so did many others. June of 2014 is really when this got going because one thing that the speaker was able to do is he was able to get this plan out of the House. And he sent it over to the Senate and told the Senate, "You know what? If you don't like it, make it better." And that was pretty much his exact words. And so what the Senate attempted to do was straight raise the gasoline tax. And they were going to raise it by a significant amount to bring in about $1.2 to $1.5 billion. But there were some political problems with that. They tried to get the vote up in June. They could not get it. So they wrote for summer, as we all know in this group, there was an election that was coming up. So you lost somebody as a result of that election. But that took up the majority of the time between June and, quite frankly, lame duck. So when it didn't happen in June, said, "You know what? This will happen in lame duck. We'll figure out what the next steps are." So the Senate revisited their plan in lame duck. They were able to find the votes for that plan. And they were able to pass that over to the House, a $1.5 billion tax increase, is quite frankly what it was. And I think what the House said was, "Ooh." I don't think they said it's that big of a tax increase. And they got a little nervous because now the ball was in their court. And so the speaker then came up with his second plan. And really, as we talk about his second plan, that was dead on arrival too. You know, and essentially what happened was if he wanted to eliminate the sales tax at the pump, which they view as a structural problem, and there's a lot of ways it is because we pay sales tax at the pump, it doesn't go into our road network. It goes into schools and local governments. And so they wanted to ensure that everybody that was buying gas and the taxes that they paid on gas was actually going into the roads, you know, fairly. But in order to do that, you know, we, as local governments, didn't like it because without a guaranteed funding source to replace that, there was a $75 million loss to us. And he said that loss would be made up by growth in sales tax. So every year, we benefit from some growth in the sales tax. But as opposed to benefiting from this growth now, we would just be held harmless. Thank you very much for your consideration. Okay? I mean, we didn't necessarily like that. Again, so we waited for a couple of weeks. You know, they kind of batted this around. And the decision was made that the legislature wasn't going to be able to handle this as a collective group. So they got what they refer to as the quadrant together. So it's the two leaders in the House, two leaders in the Senate, plus the governor. And they worked to hammer out a proposal. And the proposal that they hammered out is what you see before you today as Proposal One. And it came out late in lame duck. And it was something that kind of caught us all by surprise because even us as an organization had advocated for a fix being done legislation. Right? We did not want this to go to a vote for the people. We wanted it done as a simple solution. We thought it was the cleanest way to do it. We thought when you took that next step, it really kind of muddied the waters a little bit. But to be very honest with you, as the representative spoke, the political realities that happened down there are much different. And to be totally honest, to do a state straight gas tax increase in the House, the votes were not there. Right? They weren't there then, and they are not there today. Okay? And that's the political reality. So the governor basically said, "Well, either we're going to come up with some plan or no plan." And he is not a no-plan kind of guy. And so he decided, "We're going to come up with some plan." And so his plan surrounded around a few different things. Five big keys in that plan. He wanted to make sure that there was new revenue. So not just a reshuffling of revenue, but actual new revenue. That we protected schools, local government, and transit in the state, which wasn't done under the Bolger plan. That those transportation taxes that I mentioned actually go to transportation at the pump. So he wanted to remove that sales tax component. That we keep competitive gas prices at the pump. And this is where I usually like to take a minute because everybody's curious, "Well, how much does this proposal going to affect me at the pump?" Right? And this is the one place in the PowerPoint that I get to do that. And so by a result of reducing the sales tax at the pump with no gas tax increase, your gas prices would actually go down. With the gas tax increase then being added back to that proposal, gas prices will go up from today's current level somewhere around six or seven cents, according to MDOT. So gas prices really remain just as consistent or just about the same price they are today. And we know gas prices fluctuate up and down. So you really wouldn't see a significant difference in the actual price of gas that you're paying at the pump, but a significant amount more of new revenue would go into the network. And then the final one is providing taxes smoothly for low-income individuals across Michigan. That's why I handed out the paper there that is provided by the Michigan League for Public Policy. And I think it's really important to note on this page, you know, if you are a single parent with two kids working minimum wage job, your income's about $15,000. Right? With the restoration of the earned income tax to 20% of the federal level, after you pay sales tax and after you pay that increased gas tax, it's actually $608 more in your pocket as a result of that restoration. So there's some concern about the sales tax being a regressive type tax. And I'm not going to disagree with that. They did. Right? But the reason that they added this restoration of the EITC back in there was to really ensure that we dealt with, you know, those working families at the lowest income thresholds to make sure that they were not harmed in any significant way as a result of this proposal. So, you know, kind of getting into the, really into the nuts and bolts here, there's two separate things. Sometimes people think, "Well, we're going to raise a penny in the sales tax, and that's what's going to pay for the roads." That's actually not what's going to pay for the roads. The sales tax increase is to backfill those dollars that happens as a result of exempting the sales tax from the pump. You've got about $75 million for local government, like I mentioned. It's about $600 million for schools. So you have to make up for that loss. And the only way to make up for that in a guaranteed format is to go to the ballot and raise the sales tax. The only guaranteed funds that we can have. Right? They're going to, as again, as I mentioned, eliminate the sales tax for motor fuel. Couple of changes to the school aid fund. And there's a big question, "Are we defunding higher ed as a result?" That's not what's going to happen. Higher ed's going to go back into the general fund where it has been since Proposal A passed in '94. Snyder took office. He started to pull down some school aid dollars and dump that into higher education. There was a big kind of point of contention for Democrats. That wasn't what the intention of Proposal A was. So we're actually getting that closer to what the original intention of Proposal A was by actually saying now, in this ballot proposal, that higher ed will not be included in the school. The statutory changes are actually what raise the revenue for roads. And that's where, once we exempt that sales tax from the pump, we can then increase that tax that's paid on gas. And it's a complicated formula the way they do it. And I'm happy to really get into it in detail if you want me to. And feel free to ask questions when I've done. But essentially, what we're going to do is we're going to go for a cents per gallon tax, mention 19 cents per gallon amount. And we're going to charge it on a percentage basis now, actually, on the full sale price at the rack at the point of distribution. So not necessarily the pump and point of sale when you see it go down. So as a result of that, when we go to percentage base, we're going to increase that percentage. And that's going to bring in the $1.22 billion in revenue for roads that we're discussing. Changes to vehicle registration fees. Kind of the misnomer out there is that registration fees are going up. The answer is yes and no. Okay? So registration fees are going up on heavy trucks. Registration fees are going up, I believe, $25 on hybrid vehicles and $50 on 100% electric vehicles. On your average vehicle that everybody drives, day in and day out, registration fees are not going up. What we are doing is we are eliminating the depreciation that happens. And what the depreciation is, is each of the first three years you own a new vehicle or a new used vehicle, your registration fee declines by 10%. They're going to eliminate that depreciation. So nobody's registration fees are actually going up. They're just going to be held flat. Or if you purchase a new or new used vehicle, they're just going to stay consistent of where they are in the first year. So it's not an increase in registration fees. It's really what we would refer to as a smoothing of registration. And then again, restoration of the earned income tax credit, key component to this. Transportation-related reforms around competitive bidding and warranties. And then I always like to remind people that the ballot proposal is still up for a vote and makes it happen through the presentation. Sorry, I can speed it up if you're getting anxious and want to ask a question. But the money's the big question, right? And so we know that a penny increase in the sales tax brings in about $1.34 billion. You don't realize all of that because you lose that money that's collected in sales tax at the pump. And since we're exempting that sales tax at the pump, you actually lose that revenue. Statutory changes bring in, you know, $1.2 billion for roads. About $95 million of that is from the registration changes that I had mentioned. And the earned income tax credit restoration costs you about $260 million. But when we increase sales tax, there is a portion of that that is general fund dollars. And that's where that money's funded out. So kind of the net impact of this, I talk about 2017, 2018 because there are some components to this package where in the first two years, we're going to pay down some MDOT debt. And some people question, "Well, why do we want to help MDOT if you pay down their debt?" And I get it. Big question. You know, they should manage things on their own. But their debt's a result of bonds that were taken out in 1997 under the Engler administration, the last time we raised gas taxes. They have about $2 billion in debt. We're going to pay off about $1.2 billion of that. That's what's callable in their bond. 800 in the first year, 400 in the second. And everybody goes, "Well, why do we want to do that? Shouldn't that money just go to the roads right away?" There's two reasons why they're not doing that. The first is because we can gain purchasing, they gain personal, but we can gain flexibility by paying down that debt. MDOT's annual debt payment right now is $243 million on an annual basis. So think of it like your credit card, right? Do you want to pay the minimum payment over a long period of time? Probably not because it costs you more. If you can pay more upfront right away, you're going to free up capital on the back end. And that's exactly the thought process behind this. The second reason is the workforce, right? So the question of whether or not the workforce is or isn't there today to handle an infusion of $1.2 billion in revenue. And there's some question to that. I think the road industry says, "Yes, we can handle it." There are others that will say, "If we do that, there will be some inflation on those products, and you won't get the biggest bang for your buck." So what you want to do is allow that, the opportunity for that workforce to slowly ramp up helps keep the cost of projects down in the long run. And again, we're fully realizing the biggest bang that we can with the dollars that will be available to us. Comprehensive transportation fund, which is transit, it's going to be about $106 million to the good. School aid fund in that third year, so fully implemented, is up to almost $400 million. Constitutional revenue sharing, which is what we care about, $100 million is probably a pretty conservative estimate, but could be more than that. And then the general fund, after we take out the EITC restoration, it's only about $36 million of that really going into the general fund. So we really think it has an opportunity for a lot of impact. So again, all or nothing, right? So we know that it becomes effective October 1st of this year. MDOT will have the ability to do some bonding right away, if this, some short-term bonding right away if this passes, and get some projects off the ground right away. Dollars will start to flow into your system and into your community almost immediately. So your Act 51 payment right now comes in on a monthly basis. As we start that October 1st implementation date, that next month is when I'm being told of that first check. You should see the increase. So all the bills are tie-barred. So if the ballot proposal passes, everything goes away with the exception of one thing. There are some marketplace fairness bills, which is sales tax on internet purchases. It's only about $6 million total. But those are the two bills that are tied, which are not tie-barred, and will stay if the ballot proposal fails. No Plan B. Everybody says, "Well, there's always a Plan B," right? There can always be a Plan B. You can always do something different. To a certain extent, yes. So let's say Plan B is, "We're going to go and raise business taxes." Conceptually, it works, right? You could do it. You can submit a bill that's going to raise business tax. But the whole key, this is the political reality, it doesn't have the votes, right? And that's the big difference here. Plans are things that can have votes. Wishes are things that don't. So we can all wish that it would happen. But plans are things that are really achievable. And so just to give you an example of how short-sighted some of the plans are, Representative Todd Corser reduced his Plan B last week. One of his key components to that plan was completely eliminating statutory revenue sharing. 100% elimination.
He approached me to support it. I said, "No, thank you."
Right? So when you talk about the types of alternatives that are out there, that's how dire it gets, right? Those are the types of things that people talk about as Plan B. And we don't see that, quite frankly, as a viable plan. So I have my next slide here is some frequently asked questions. Let me go ahead and... Sorry. What's next? We supported it on the 23rd of January. We joined the Safe Pro Jet Coalition. We were asking for our communities that we represent their help to get out and do some things. Obviously, a resolution is one of the key components to that. But I think the next slide now is the FAQ section. And I would ask you, one that I don't have up here, but I'd just like to kind of challenge you with to think about. If I provided you with a blank piece of paper today, and we knew that our road network needed to be improved, and you took all the political situations and all the political debate out of this, and I said, "You can have a billion to a new road funding, right? You have $100 billion more for transit. You have $100 billion more for local government. 300 billion more for schools. Restoration of the earned income tax credit to help our low-income individuals across the state, and it's going to cost you a penny." And you didn't know anything else. Would you think about it as being a good plan? Something that you could think about, get your arms... I think that answers yes, first of all, right? I mean, that paper, it looks very good. But when you mix all the political stuff with it, you know, people talk about, and I'll get into why the legislature do their job, it confuses things and it complicates things. But if you actually look at the plan itself, it's solid. I mean, it's real money. It's pretty well thought out. And in this day and age, in this legislature, and I apologize to representatives, that's a pretty good achievement, right? That's a pretty good achievement. And we try to stay alive and tell people, "Don't let the perfect stand in the way of the good." There's not a perfect solution out there on this. There's just not. But this is a very good solution with nothing but poor solutions following it should it fail. You know, so is it a special interest money grab? They ask about those other people getting money in this proposal, right? Well, who's the other people getting money? Communities? Schools? And I always ask, "Is that a special interest?" I mean, when I turn on the drinking water, I expect it to be clean. You provide that. That's not a special interest service. When I put my kids on the bus and I send them to school, and I expect that they receive the best education possible, that's not a special interest. And so we try to bump that myth all the time because there are no special interests involved in this. There's nobody else getting rich off of this plan. I mean, it's going to those things, schools, local government, and roads. Isn't there enough money in the budget? If you look at it again as one big number, $54 billion, you might think that there is. But about $44 billion of that is tied up in either direct federal funds or dollars we have to use to draw down the federal funds that cannot be used for other things. We have about $10 billion in discretionary funds. 20% of that is corrections alone. And I don't know how many of you are thinking about cutting corrections, but that's not on my list personally. And so you're really debating that number over and over again. And you have to find that $1.2 billion you need every single year in cuts. And that's very, very difficult to do without taking programs that people really care about off the books. So what are the guarantees, right? And I think this is the big one. What are those guarantees? How do we know that those road dollars are going to go into the road system? How do we know that those sales tax dollars are going to go to schools and local government? And very simply, meet the Constitution. Fortunately for us, we can still stand by it at that end. And very, very specifically in the Constitution, it talks about sales taxes. Where 60% after the two cents goes off the top for Prop One in '94, or excuse me, for school aid in '94, you have four cents left to deal with. That four cents constitutionally right now says 60% to school, 15% to local government. That is not changing in this ballot proposal. So you will be guaranteed to get that money, right? To you guys here in Southfield, $640,000 more dollars in constitutional revenue sharing guaranteed to come in. The road, same thing. The Constitution states that our user fees for our road system, which is gas taxes and registration fees, has to go into our road network, right? Has to do it. And it's distributed by the Act 51 funding formula. That funding formula can change. But you can't change the formula to send money to corrections or to send money to schools. It has to be used on that network because the Constitution says at least 90% of all of that revenue has to be used on roads and bridges. The remaining amount can be used on administration or the comprehensive transportation fund, which is transit, right? So there's a tough piece of guarantee that those dollars will go to the roads. Again, for you guys, you get about $5.1 million right now. At the end of this, you're going to get $8.5 million. That's three, almost three and a half million more dollars on an annual basis that you will have as revenue from Act 51, right? And that's a significant amount of money. It's roughly a 60% increase in the amount of revenue you'll get. Now, I always look at it, if somebody gave you a 60% rate, pretty good deal, right? You'd probably do a lot of good with that. But at the back end, if the threat was, "Well, if you don't want to do this, we're going to look at cutting." Right? I'm going to take the risk, I think, a little bit, to go out and support what I know is a known entity versus what is the unknown. And I think that's a big key to that. And finally, are we upset at the legislature because they didn't do their job? Sure. No question about it, right?
I wasn't there.
You know, I'm not going to hide that. Again, as I mentioned earlier, I mean, we wanted them to do it on their own, right? But at the end of the day, the votes weren't there. And you can't get a plan done without the votes, right? And so the best thing that they could do is at least provide us with something. And what they provided us with, is it perfect? I admit it too, that that's not necessarily the case. But is it awful darn good? I think so. And what are the alternatives when we come to this, should this fail? And everything that we've talked about, and all of the regulations are all, says it's not good. And so the last thing that I'll point your attention to is the letter that I gave you to Speaker Bolger. So everybody says, "Let's go back to the Bolger plan. Let's go back to the Bolger plan." Right? Well, right in his letter, he tells you that this is our last and best opportunity to get this done. He is fully endorsing. He sat at that negotiating table, realizing that the limitations that the legislature were, and tried to put forward the best possible plan we could to help our road network, to make sure that we didn't harm schools, to make sure that we didn't harm local government. And he is fully behind this now. He is not standing behind his old proposal, which got labeled as his, which was just an idea that he kind of came up with as an alternative, but didn't have the votes. So it stayed just that, an idea. But now we have a plan before us. So, you know, with that, I will take some questions. I'm sure the representative would as well. But really wanted to kind of lay it out to you in a very stark fashion, quite frankly, with the facts and what we do and what we think could happen should it fail. And we would encourage you, as a community from our organization standpoint, to please get on with it.
All right. Council, any questions?
Just Sandra.
How certain are you that you get formula is going to yield $3.5 million?
Today, very certain. Now, I don't have a perfect crystal ball, but what I can tell you is that should the formula change, it would actually be a direction probably to move more money into areas that have existing to build infrastructure, much like we do here. Part of the reason why it doesn't change is because some of the legislators, particularly on the Transportation Committee, are from more rural areas. And they're trying to protect those dollars right now that come into county system and not have them funneled into areas that are a little different looking than what they are. So I don't see that formula changing in any drastic way. What we hope to have happen is actually have it directed in a different direction. So you may still get the same amount of money. The counties may still get the same amount of money. MDOT may still get the same amount of money. But we want the focus of all of those dollars to be on the currently existing built infrastructure, which I think would benefit all of us in this regard.
Thank you.
All right. I'm Ms. Cox.
Yeah. I don't want to be too, but I wanted to take you to, with that presentation, understand it. That's what the big problem is. You can do this 100 times over. You're lame. And myself, I can't go through that with you and understand what you're talking about. What happens if gas goes up? The amount of money that people are going to be losing at the pump to spend the money, it's going to be reduced. There's a whole series of questions on this. You almost need... You almost need Pam Iran to do an audit of the things we went through and what the bottom line is. But I just, you know, I don't know why they just didn't take and deal with roads, didn't talk about these guys up at the legislature, you know? I thought that's why Turner must be there, so they could make hard core judgments on these things, instead of playing politics with it. You know, I'm not in offense with this, and I'm not even convinced with your presentation to even endorse it. Because I really have to go through it and find out why roads are not holding up. I mean, first of all, you've got to find out how much money you're going to need to take care of roads. And if the roads are going to fall apart every five years, you're never going to have enough money. So there's no money in history research to find out why, why roads are what they are. You've got telegraph road up north of our city that's falling apart, you had coal pad and brand-new concrete, five years old. And I think we see that, I see that. And I'm saying is, what are they going to do? Come back another five years later and never come back, and then we have more pitfalls and more problems? In other words, I'd rather see something that is firm, amount of money that is firm, whether it be sales tax, whatever that number is to make it score, and to have a limitation of what, how many years so people can see what you've done with the money? And if you did well, extend it. But you go through this thing that you just got through, trying to understand, there's a lot of things. Like I said, what happens if there's no cap on gas? And you think these wholesale guys are going to sit and be taxed and not pass it on? I mean, what's to stop them from doing that?
Well, they think they get passed on.
I mean, it gets, you know, and I shouldn't say, I'm in the government forty-six years by a low-cost government. You know, I mean, we just got a wake in the office, I see a sister back there, that, and I love veterans, they don't even want to even think about it, they deserve everything they get and more. But how does the governor, you know, exempt all the veterans from housing? We exempt all their houses now in the city, seventy-nine of them in Southfield. Took away our eighty thousand dollars' worth of property tax, exempted. And the rest of it is partially exempted. And they still expect us to look at the state and say, "Okay, you guys, you're really taking care of us." You know, they take three million from us over here, put three million back over here and say, "We're even." And that's what they're doing to us. There's threat, there's a threat of taking away our statutory, you know, and all these threats. It doesn't matter because they're doing it anyway. It's not a threat, they're doing it. Every single day they're taking our money, every single day. And we're not dealing with roads, we're dealing with politics. You know, "I'm going to do this for you, and then I'll get your vote, and I'll do this for you," and before it's so diluted that it comes up with this formula, like I said, Pam Iran would have to go through it and tell me what is the bottom line and what's the end that's going to screw up the formula.
Mayor, I think you're absolutely right. I mean, you hit the nail on the head that, you know, I feel like on this proposal, to a degree, we're legislating out of fear. The fear of what happens on May sixth if this ballot proposal doesn't happen. But I would tell you, the reason it's a ballot proposal, obviously, is we're changing the state sales tax. That's in the state constitution, so that therefore we have to vote on it. If this plan could have been done legislatively, it probably would have been done legislatively. But there's an aspect to it that requires us as the public to vote on it and change the constitution. I think the legislature should have found a revenue stream that they could have passed, but this perception is that it's now being passed on to us, but constitutionally, we have to vote on it. You know, the reality is, is that, you know, this is a, we are voting to a small degree out of fear of what happens on May sixth. And I can tell you, as John pointed out, they're revising, they're rehashing that second Bulger plan, which is to strictly eliminate the sales tax on gasoline and implement a wholesale tax without making up for the lost revenue by eliminating the gas sales tax. And that's going to be an absolute direct hit to our communities, and I think that the people who authored that plan don't really care. So after May sixth, should this not pass, we can't cut our way to the 1.3, 1.5 billion dollars that's needed annually to fix our roads. But the party that's in charge will find a way to cut, and we're going to be, at the city level, the reapers of that.
Very, but the gas is at its source, about sixty dollars a barrel, it runs up to about a hundred and ten. Do you think these guys are going to sit on that? They're losing their buildings over in Houston, and that eighteen million, you know, square feet of office buildings go up the head of the pitch because it's all oil, men, and they're losing their shirts. Do you think they're going to take that for a while? They're going to figure a way to get that gas up. And that throws all these formulas that are based on the uses of gasoline out the window. And the other thing is, you know, the roads, you know, this is last year, people really got hit from the bad frost. And now they feel a pressure to pass something. And I don't think that this thing really addresses roads. You know, three million dollars, we have a ninety-nine billion dollar bond, you know that? You know, so, what is a three million? That's three miles, right? Million dollars a mile, that's three miles of road. So I'm going to go through all of this to have three miles of roadstone? Doesn't make sense.
Uh, Mayor, I want to also address another concern of yours, which you've had at this table for a while, and that's the warranty. That's the quality of work that's done, and we're sick of seeing cracks in roads.
You guys haven't, not you, but they haven't even, they're negligent in doing warranties. We're going to have a problem out here too. I just see an eighteen-wheeler out here with pipes going down our road, and we have water coming up, we have a frost and a thaw. They're still putting an eighteen-wheeler on my concrete. So I'm telling you that none of this makes sense to me, because I know what people want. They want roads, passable roads and crowded roads, both internally in their subdivisions as well as mains. But we're really starting to see that somebody's getting away with something because the roads don't hold up. And so there's no money in research. And that's got to be number one. Why do they saw thirty, thirty feet? So you get thump, 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 thump everywhere you go, you know? And it's been going on and going on and going on, 275, our own streets, and they just saw that there over here. You don't think the thaw and freeze is going to make this all go up and down? So, anyway, I mean, I just see this, as a person, I do work in the contracting business with my uncles and everybody else, and I see the workmanship, and it's terrible. And nobody, and nobody cares. And that's why the warranties were sitting there, nobody checks anything, there's nobody inspecting anything. Nobody's throwing that eighteen-wheeler out here and saying, "You always screwed up my road out here, you better tear it all up and put it back." And I guess, I guess until you start making some hard decisions and watching, protecting our investment, it's going to continue to get worse. But like I said, I get three million dollars, what did they take off of seven, seventy-nine houses, they took the exemption off, what did they do with eighty thousand dollars' worth of personal property tax removal? What did they do when they took the balance off the personal property tax? They always suck it off the guys here to ask our people for more money, all right? And I'm really tired of it, I really am. I really want to see roads fixed so it's very easy. I mean, how you can do it, I'm sure people would do it just like the ninety-nine billion dollar bond. You put up a bond, I'm sure they'd probably approve it for ten years, twenty years, thirty years. It's fixed roads.
Yeah, I do want to give John the opportunity to talk about the warranty aspect.
How many pages is this bill?
Well, there's actually ten bills involved in it.
Oh, ten bills.
It's a little more pages.
Yeah, that makes it easier, huh? I'm at Plan B.
No, no, I think the lawyers get picked off about.
You're absolutely right.
I mean, I've been around here so long, I see this stuff, this stuff.
Finish with the counsel question, the name is.
Yes, that's true.
Go back to the panel.
Yeah, first of all, I think you did a great presentation. The amount of detail working in your head bothers my mind. The problem is, you know, people talk about attracting business to Michigan, but they don't seem to recognize that people are not coming here, that their employees' cars are damaged, and, I mean, how do you attract residents to care if you don't have this? Rescind them, rescind them by any means, everything it should be. I totally agree with that, but my concern is, if we don't do this, then we're not going to have anything. And I don't understand, I remember when we went through the time that all of these roads were going further north and out into the green areas, and we were fighting for money then, and that's been many, many years ago. And it just kept more new roads out of places that don't exist yet. My concern is, and I really believe this, if we don't do this, we're going to have nothing. They don't want to do this, they really don't want to do this. So I'm going to support it, I'm going to vote for it, and I don't think it's the best answer, the final answer, it's not the best answer, but it's probably the only one we're going to have, and it's happening in the immediate future, so.
I just have a question about the vehicle registration fees. You said that you're going to be eliminating the depreciation of those fees, so the registration cost will be the same for the entire time that you hold that vehicle. And just one other thing, I was looking at, you mentioned about the higher education funding going over to the general fund, but you can just kind of just explain it, we don't have time for this.
So I don't know as many details about this part of the convention, but we do look in terms of the local government aspect. But when Prop 8 passed in ninety-four, the intention was for it to be for K-12 education. And up until really when Dunder Snyder took office, it was being used for that intention, quite frankly. And when he took office, he took some of that K-12 talent, based on his interpretation of those surroundings, that he thought he could, and put it into higher education universities. And really made the Democrats upset, because they thought that money was specifically for that sort of purpose. And so really, one of the requests was, as they got into this negotiation, was that if we're going to talk about increasing funding to the school aid fund, which is one of the components to this, we also want that assurance that you're not going to go and take that money and put it into higher education. So they're solidifying in the Constitution that it is for K-12 and not for higher.
And I want, and probably to your specific question, community colleges are included in the school aid fund and aren't considered higher ed in terms of removing the higher ed back to the general fund. So community colleges are still protected in the school aid fund now.
One other question. So the city attorney and city manager, if there is a benefit, John tells us 3.5 million, isn't there a way that we can at least let the public know that there is a benefit for Southfield? You're not telling people to vote yes, but you're telling them that the tiers of our road fund and revenue sharing would be increased by 3.5 million in a year? I think that's an important thing for people to know.
Well, we can educate, and as long as we're not saying, we're encouraging people to vote a certain way, you can educate using public funds to do the education thing. So if it's all factual, there's not a problem. If the fact is that, right, it's going to resolve an additional 3.5 million for our Act 51 fund, then that's a fact, and you're fine with that.
Well, you know, I agree with Don. This whole thing, I was angry about it, it smelled, I've had arguments with Jeremy over it, and I see no choice but to support it, because I don't want to see us lose more revenue. And as Don has said, our ninety-nine million road bond isn't going to do very much, considering that we have 246 mile local streets. So here is a regular source of money that's going to go on for years if this passes. So it would seem to me it would be in our interest to get the word out that this is the impact that this ballot question will have on Southfield. I think voters need to know that. My only concern is how definite are those figures? And we could get some expert to do the, to draw it out, somebody who knows the proposal better than we do.
So those numbers are not ours, it's from the, we got those from MDOT and from the Department of Commerce.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to, can we do that, Mr. Administrator? Can we have our community relations person?
Absolutely. If there's a consensus that the city's willing to adopt a resolution in favor, we'll prepare an item for the twenty-third and create our own fact sheet. I have consistently heard a sixty percent increase in our Act 51 formulas, which, you know, let me just point out, the ninety-nine million dollar bond gives you a capital source. An additional 3.4 million dollars would give us badly needed dollars for operations. And I have said to my staff, I would, my recommendation would be if that 3.4, the first million would go into operations to better maintain what we have, and then the other two million annually would be structured into some sort of debt relief. And that was one of the things when we did the ninety-nine million bond, we said if there was a proposal passed, we wouldn't levy the full amount of assessment in order to repay with the debt. So part of our debt coverage could possibly come from another two million. But if you looked at, if another three million came in, that would allow us to restore, to have more people out doing maintenance, crack sealing, and some of those things to help preserve the length of our road as well.
Then I'd be willing to move a Rule 10, so that we could give the administration directions to, we're not telling the public how to vote, we're just simply stating the impact of passage of this ballot issue on Southfield. So I'd move a Rule 10 for that.
Can I ask for a question? You want a statement that will, the privateers will do it for us?
Yeah.
And Senator, we're supporting it or not?
I didn't say we have to.
We're supporting it.
It's just a fact sheet.
You would produce a fact sheet, like we did for the bond.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, Senator. Would I make any more on Rule 10?
Yes.
Just definitely. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
I need a close.
Then I'd make the same motion to put out a public statement, a fact sheet, on the impact of, to make this ballot proposal on Southfield.
Okay, we have a motion, Senator. If I was to, if I was to, if we were to put a public fact sheet on the road funding.
People need to know that.
All in favor?
I know it's a little bit of a comment, but you actually.
Uh, go ahead.
Well, go ahead, you're going to be voting, it won't matter.
Right, go ahead, you can go ahead.
No, it's all right, go ahead, I'm going to say it anyway. Well, I was just going to say, you know, that if you tell individuals to vote for you show this presentation, you tell them, "Is it worth all this to get three miles of roadway done in your city?" And if you ask that to every two million, you'd see that there's no way. Number one, they'd never understand it, they'd never know the impact it had on them, and they end up guaranteed. So like I said, the oil down to sixty dollars a barrel is all based on a chemistry way. Your gas is not capped, the price of gasoline is not capped, is that correct?
I'm sorry. The price of gasoline is not capped, the price of gasoline is not capped, the way in which the mechanism operates in this proposal, it says that on a twelve-month mortgage and a wholesale price, that there's a cap, and it's much like Proposal A, where gas prices can go up, but the tax we charge on gas cannot go up by more than inflation or five percent, whichever is less. So just because gas prices go up doesn't mean you're going to reap a whole ton of new benefits from the gas tax. It's capped, even if gas prices go up, which they could do without this proposal and realize no benefit. So, there is a mechanism in there to try and protect all the connected interests in terms of the tax actually going up at an extreme high rate.
But the only way it could be fair to the individual is that for every dollar that goes up, percentage-wise, your money's reduced. That's the only thing, because everything is tied to your process of gasoline. I mean, but then you throw in all these other things that filter into the formula, you know, that this happens, this happens, and if this happens, this happens. And I guess, and I guess I don't believe that the average resident in this city even would understand it if we stayed here for a month. And that's what's bad about the piece of legislation. And like I said, it should be, but everybody is saying, "I'm willing to pay for roads, so give me money for roads." And the way And the way they are presenting it, you know, is way off the killer. Even if you said, "Okay, let's try this for ten years," or something, something where they could see it happening. And but the main thing is, is there's not been any money for research on how to make our roads stay longer. And that's the biggest crime, because there's no money anywhere, federal nor state. That's all.
Once again, this is an annual source of revenue, so it's not just 3.5 million.
Ten years, that's thirty miles.
But it's a continuing source of revenue, and our bond is going to end one day.
Are you any sure that in this building, once it should have passed, that registration doesn't go back in and change the formula again?
We'd be adjusting the state constitution, you know, so that would require another vote of the public.
Okay, so once it passes, that's it, there won't be any other changes. So local governments will get their pot, the schools will get their pot, and there'll be a time to vote.
Right.
The only caveat I will add to that is, local government and schools, absolutely no question. Roads, absolutely no question either, but the votes is a little different scenario, because it's the entire network that we look at when we talk about road distribution. So it's not just what happens in cities and villages, but it's what happens in the county system, and what happens in the state system. And so as a result of that, our formula, it's called Act 51, running formula dictates where those dollars go. Currently, right now, MDOT gets thirty-nine point more, and counties get thirty-nine point less, cities and villages get twenty-one point. It is conceivable that that could change over time. But in the entire way in which we dealt with the constitution of guaranteeing user fees going into the system, it's always been separate from the policy in terms of how we spend it, because it has to adjust over time. And that's what the formula does, is it allows the flexibility to adjust. So I don't want to give anybody the false impression that it's an absolute 100% guarantee going forward for detergents. The guarantee is that those dollars will always remain within the road system, and it's the formula that dictates how it gets back, much like I said earlier. But the will to change the formula is not there in a significant manner where we think, and this was a big part for us as our organization to get behind it, because all of our members are affected by this, because they are all in local road agency. We were not going to support something that we thought, long-term, would have a negative impact on them, and they would be in jeopardy of losing dollars in any significant way. We do not see that coming in the future. But there is a certain degree of flexibility that you need to have with those dollars over the course of time to ensure that you can do certain things with them. And so that's a key component to this, and allows that formula to continue to kind of provide a living that any document...
So I have one other question. Wouldn't you just say, with MDOT, that's getting the debt paid off? How much are they getting?
Well, over the course of this plan, it would happen over the first two years, it's 1.2 billion dollars.
Why did that happen?
Well, the reason that happened is because right now they have an annual debt payment from bonds that were taken out in nineteen ninety-seven, the last one they raised gas taxes.
They take the money with the program?
Yeah, but the reason they're doing it upfront is because right now their annual debt payment, which comes off the top, where any of the money gets distributed, is 243 million dollars. If we can reduce that about...
The other question is, is everything else frozen that the legislature could do, such as, could they go ahead and raise registration vehicles?
Well, that ability has always...
Which would be legislative, and have a vote?
That ability has always been there, so hypothetically...
So then, or they could come back and raise registration fees?
Hypothetically, in the future, that is available.
Yeah, I, you know, a part of the problem with this, I think, is that people aren't going to understand that some of the money, why is it going to schools, why is it going to this? Shouldn't it just be about roads? And they're going to, I'm afraid, this is what I hear, is that people are going to say, "Why are we dealing with schools now? Why are we dealing with this now? It shouldn't be about roads." And I think that sort of muddies the whole picture for a lot of voters.
There's no question about this, it makes it more complicated, but I just want to let you know, one of the things that the public has talked, and let's kind of cross the state about, is they're moving the sales tax from the pump, because they do not want to see taxes that pass the pump not go to road. That's a big fundamental structural problem. And the representative spoke about it, the second we do that, it creates a hole for schools and local government. And the only way to backfill that money with guaranteed funds is by going to the people and increasing sales tax. So it's not necessary that we're trying to make a complicated system out of this, we're actually thinking what is very complicated right now, because you have two unique sources of tax on gasoline, and by the sheer fact that you're eliminating one, it actually simplifies the way in which we deal with that tax, so very clearly...
Well, we understand that, and the general public will, I think that's going to be, I see that as an obstacle to...
Well, I think, to be very honest with you, I think that's exactly why I'm here today, because I can't deliver that message today. I can deliver it to you as counsel, we're hoping that you as counsel can help spread that message to your residents.
Okay, we're going to wrap it up, Mr. Administrator.
We're going to vote?
No, we've already given a vote, we're going to answer that.
Okay, so vote.
We will, the administration will proceed, our attempt after this conversation to move that, we're probably going to something on cable to help educate people.
All right, thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Council.
All right, the next item on our agenda is to repeat a big perspective of...